We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will take the roll.
Mr. Sextrow?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Aubrey?
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Mr. Burke is missing an excuse tonight. Next, the minutes have been previously distributed. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll, minutes are approved. Committee reports.
Mayor, start off January very strong. Our records, record, it looks like it's the highest receipts, earnings tax receipts in recent history for, you know, for January, so again, a very positive start. Tax receipts for the month exceeded last year by forty-eight thousand, almost forty-nine thousand. Total tax receipts were about one point four five million, so for those who want to hear the real numbers, but again, a very good start to the year. The Gorman Farm, we've had some discussion, just to remind everybody that we'll be reviewing the land use plan with representatives from the farm, so they can bring us up to speed on everything, and we'll be reviewing that in the upcoming months. They sent a, if anybody needs the information, they sent several different packets out. If you don't have those, that's what we'll be reviewing. Rec Center, fifty new pieces of pool furniture for the pool deck have been ordered and expected to be here before the pool season starts. Also, they're waiting on quotes for, to stain the three pergolas, and hopefully that'll be done also prior to the season. It's no much fun, four hundred and thirty-nine registered for the event, and two hundred and fifty people actually watched it on Facebook, so fireworks played out on Facebook, but there was a lot of interest there. Also, just for those who have kids in these ages, recruiting kids for baseball, for two of the teams, and for girls, U8 softball, so if you have kids who might be interested in baseball or softball, please contact the Rec Center to see if there's still a need for that age group. And the Service Department, snow removal update, for the current season, we have used about six hundred and fifty tons for the seven events through this week. Hopefully, at the end of the snow season, we won't need any more. As soon as I say that, I know we will have snow. The chipper has finally been received and is in current service, so we've been waiting for that for quite a while. The Service Department is also currently advertising for a summer seasonal work, planning to hire three to four for the summer to help with a lot of the outside maintenance and everything. The shred day, I know everybody looks forward to that. Shred day is April twenty-second, I know there was some mix-up on the dates, April twenty-second, so start collecting all your recyclables. And lastly, I know there's a lot of interest in the pickleball courts. James, we received, after our last meeting, we received the bids, and we think we're going to have somebody to actually start the work this spring?
We have, we have an ordinance tonight.
Okay, okay. So, that'll be good.
Any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, can we have police and fire?
Yes, we can. We're going to start out with the police report, and given some events recently in the village, I'm going to ask the chief to speak to that.
Good idea, good idea.
Thank you. Mayor, council, I wanted to update everybody, I know I spoke to you all last week, in regards to, to the shooting, the officer involved, shooting over Speedway, I want to give a few updates on that, so everybody was aware. We learned several things about the incident that I think are appropriate to share before council. Some of those are, we did confirm that the subject did fire shots at Speedway prior to the officers arriving up there. There were discharged shotgun shells, both in the lot of Speedway and in his vehicle, and witnesses testified that, that he fired shots prior to the officer arriving. The officer, Sergeant Terhar, when he arrived, the subject did point the shotgun at him when Sergeant Terhar gave him the verbal commands to drop the gun. Rather than dropping the gun, he actually turned toward Sergeant Terhar with the gun, and it was at that point in time that Sergeant Terhar filed, fired in self-defense, with most of those rounds striking the vehicle. And at least one of the witnesses reported that the, that the suspect discharged his shotgun during the encounter with Sergeant Terhar. He does not recall that happening, but I wouldn't necessarily expect him to, and at least that part is the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation. They're going to review the audio from the body cam to see if they can find a distinct shotgun blast that's different from Sergeant Terhar's handgun rounds being fired. The good news is, no officers were injured in the, in the incident at all. The suspect, when he fled the scene, there was actually a very similar truck that was stopped by Evendale officers that turned out not to be the suspect, but a Sharonville officer was northbound on Redding Road in the area pro-claim, when he saw the suspect vehicle going southbound on Redding Road with the barrel of shotgun still pointed out the window. A chase ensued involving Sharonville, Lockland, and Amberly Village, that went all the way to downtown Cincinnati, where the suspect crashed into a Metro bus down at Central Parkway and Race in downtown Cincinnati. During that apprehension of the suspect down there, there were no Evendale officers there, but there is a cruiser cam video from Amberly Village that I have seen. The suspect originally started to comply with officers, but then, for whatever reason, changed his mind and went towards the shotgun on two separate occasions, one, one time reaching for the shotgun, got within about a foot of having his hand on it, when officers on the scene there start deploying a pepperball, less than lethal gun, which got him to back away, and he was eventually taken into custody with the aid of a police canine there at the scene. We are doing an administrative, an internal administrative review of the, of the entire incident, that will look at all the officers' tactics that were involved that night, and we will look at that from a lessons learned perspective, we will look at it from the standpoint of do we have to change anything with training, do we have to change anything with policies? And even though that internal review is not complete, I have seen enough that I did remove Sergeant Terhar from paid administratively, which he was placed on at the time of the shooting, back to full duty effect of this past Saturday was the effective date on that, but he actually returns to work tomorrow night, I believe at eight PM tomorrow night is when he actually returns to work. The prosecutor's office on, on Monday released a statement that they believe that Sergeant Terhar acted appropriately and lawfully, and so the case will not be presented to the Hamilton County grand jury, and no charges will be filed against Sergeant Terhar. The suspect in the incident, he was indicted on ten counts, including two counts of felonious assault, two counts of failure to comply, one count of inducing panic, and five counts of aggravated menacing. That's sort of it on that. I'm going to go back to the Tokyo Foods, since that has all happened since the last council meeting. We, in that, in that case, we have executed two search warrants that included two homes for, for the suspect, two vehicles belonging to the suspect, and two cell phones belonging to the suspect, and we found no ethnic, racial, or cultural motivation. I know many of you have seen the body cam video, there's clearly a, a mental health issue there, but I don't think it's a mental health issue that is going to preclude the prosecutor's office from being able to fully prosecute him. He may have mental health issues, but I don't think this is going to be a situation of criminal insanity, so we're continuing to work on that investigation with the prosecutor's office. And I know that there was some, there were some media reports shortly after the Tokyo Foods incidents, that where people were concerned whether there was an ethnic motivation of this. Some of the folks interviewed in those media reports, I have spoken with them directly, and I have explained our entire investigative process to them, and they are quite pleased with the Police Department, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to be attending an event held by the Midwest Asian Chamber of Commerce this coming Saturday, where they're going to present me with some sort of recognition of the efforts of the Evendale Police Department to investigate that, that angle to these. And lastly, I will say, given all these incidents in a short period of time, I can tell you, I'm immensely proud of the Police Department, they have done everything that we could possibly ask of them, and more, I know the day, day of Sergeant Terhar's shooting, you know, it happened at about eleven forty-five at night, so there was a few of us that either had not been to bed yet, or had only been to bed for a brief time, and were woken up with this, and immediately came into work, and I think there was three or four members of the Police Department that ended up being awake for about thirty-six hours in a row, following through on all this, and covering all of our bases, and I can't say how much I appreciate that, and it made me proud to be the, the chief of the department, and I can assure you that you have a very professional police department that, that served the village well during all this.
Any questions, comments?
I would just like to echo what the chief said, and I don't, we're proud of the department as well, and appreciate your efforts to continue to keep us informed, as well as sharing all the appropriate information with the public. So thank you, and thank all the other officers as well.
Thank you. You may continue.
Thank you. Also, on the police side, we just wanted to inform all council that flock license plate readers are being installed, or have been installed, they were being installed within we-
In process.
It's still in process, okay? And these will be able to integrate with cameras in other communities as well, that are going to have these type of cameras, okay? Moving to the fire department, there will be a hiring committee meeting on February twenty-seventh, we will have five candidates to interview for two openings that we have for firefighters. Also, would like to let council know that there are potentially some management openings that are going to occur early next year, and to address that, we're going to start the hiring process early in the summer, to make sure that we have appropriate coverage, if in fact, we do have those openings, okay? Also, the department is applying for a federal grant to get a compressor for, to fill our tanks, and I think that's it for the fire department. Cultural arts had a really great January. Most of all of the programming was sold out, and details on upcoming programming, of course, can be found on the website. The call to artists for the fine art show has gone out, and the Bell Tower Arch Pavilion is completely booked for summer camp already. The pottery studio has been updated and is open for business now, or soon? Now, okay? And some other updates physically to the Bell Tower, retaining wall, and driveway improvements have been done there, okay? Building planning and zoning. Acres is coming to the Planning Commission regarding a new structure that they wanted to add to the facility, to replace a temporary structure that is now in place, and there will be more discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about potential plans for the Arrow Hub site as well. There were fourteen permits issued in January, mostly residential, and estimated construction costs are around a hundred and sixty thousand for that. Didn't yield a lot of revenue for us, but that was because they were mostly residential in nature. And the, the owner of the properties on Spartan Drive, where we've had issues in the past, has been notified of the violations. And that's our report.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Hey Carolyn, or Chief, and James, what's, what's the key difference between the current cameras and the new cameras being installed at, on traffic lights?
The existing cameras that were located at several locations were somewhat modified to be license plate camera. They were also really intended, they don't focus quick enough when you had the front license plates, so most of them are coming towards the intersection, now that Ohio's gotten rid of that law that you have to have a front license plate, the only one that is active is the rear. So, although they've made improvements in that aspect of it, those cameras were only being able to be accessed internally by the village. The flock safety cameras are all cloud-based, this can be accessed not only by the stand, or standalone computers in the, in the Police Department, they actually can be sent to the officers' phones and/or laptops in the vehicles. As Carolyn mentioned in the report, these can be linked with other communities. Blue Ash has thirty-something, Sharonville's has plans for seventeen, Hamilton County, God, I think it's about fifty of them now, Mason, I mean, there is a number of them in the area. So, the way these systems work is that even if you have partial plates, you have a description of the vehicle, even down to the point whether it has a roof rack, it has a window sticker, it has a bumper sticker, those can be detailed, so you can put into it, even if you might not have a license plate, and anytime one of these vehicles that meets that identification, it'll flag those during a certain period of time. Even if you have a partial number or, or letter of a license plate, those can be entered in, and it will flag those throughout the system. So from the investigator's standpoint, especially when you're doing, you know, theft or, or accident reconstructions, that somebody may have been in the vicinity, we've had a number of them, well, the classic example, Cooper and Redding Road, that our traffic signal box got hit, we had a description of the vehicle, unfortunately, there was no license plate to it, so we, although we, we suspect we found the vehicle, we haven't got an admission of that, because other than just those few pictures, it's hard to really pin that down, but as these go through the different areas, as cars come into the village, we will have that record. So, these will be located, there's fourteen of them, will be installed as part of this process, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Some of them are solar powered, so they are mounted on poles and, unfortunately, some residential yards, we've had a few calls about that, but we're trying to consolidate where we might have street signage in, in the same vicinity, that they can all be utilizing one, so we don't have proliferation of poles. The other ones will be hooked up on mast arms. They've gotten three of those done so far, or four of them done so far, the rest of them will be done next week, and then Brandon Asbrock, the electrician, will go through and actually hardwire those up. They actually have a little bit of a battery backup to them, because Sean McKitty was able to access them yesterday after they installed them, so it was interesting that, because we didn't realize they had power under that basis. So, we're learning a little bit more about this all the time. It's been effective for the number of communities that have had them, I know Mason's had them for at least a year, some other communities, and it has been very effective in being able to track down suspects or suspicious items, and so, I think it will be a very effective tool for the Police Department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Burglars beware. Mr. Jeffers and myself, and Councilman Burke had occasion a couple weeks ago to tour the Duke, new Duke Energy Plant up on the hill on Glendale-Melford Road. It's quite an interesting place up there. As one of the gentlemen from Duke said, he was coming down the hill, and a lady stopped him and wanted to know when the condominiums were going to be available for viewing. They're, they're quite extensive, and they do the job, and all kinds of safe, safety measures have been put in place, and they're actually run out of Charlotte, North Carolina. So, that's, that's an interesting stuff. In case you are concerned, the new streets that we're going to repair this year are on, they're about to be bid, we're about to go out to bid on those, am I correct? So, anything that, we're trying to see that if the street gets further damaged because of winter and stuff like that, before we select the exact streets that are going to be, going to be out for bid. In case you're interested, the, and my wife was, the hillside that is now barren of trees over on the north of, north of the complex, that's the location of our new building over there, which is, we're going to go out to bids pretty quick on that, and try to get that done sometime this year. The gun range, I saw in the paper the other day, where the city of Cincinnati said they were going to have a groundbreaking within a month or so, I'll believe that when I see it, but that's what they said they're going to do. We're about twenty-one million dollars that has been raised so far, we're still about seven million short of the total that they want for the, for the gun range to be brought to fruition, but they said they're going to have a groundbreaking, and we'll, we'll see. Also, if you're interested, problem with the food trucks are back, we've had a number of complaints about them, and we're going to be working on, and if you have any suggestions as to what we should do, we're going to be working on an ordinance, a new ordinance for food trucks. Lot of complaints from the village, and got a meeting this Thursday, anybody that has any thoughts or ideas, they would certainly, certainly be welcome.
Chief, is there more than one food truck?
Yes, sir, there's a food truck at the gas station on south on Redding Road, and there's one west on Glendale-Melford Road over at the other gas station. They're owned by brothers, I understand, but also, understand that a number of our businesses use food trucks. For example, Kinetic Vision has specific place for them, and brings them in on occasion now and then. We can't just say no food trucks, the Recreation Department uses food trucks for some events over there, so we have to be a little judicious about how we do this, and some people want them banned entirely, and that's just not possible, just not possible.
What's the complaint? They just don't like-
They don't like, they don't like-
They don't like that they're sitting there?
They think they're ugly, they think they're ugly.
Doesn't matter what time of day, they're ugly? That's, that's the complaint?
Well, there, as I understand, they can come in the morning, stay all day till about eight or nine o'clock, and then they have to leave, and then come back the next day. I don't know whether they're leaving or not, they, supposedly, the one on south Redding Road was going to relocate to someplace else, but then that fell through, and so it's back south on Redding-
It was parking behind a building for a short period of time, but now it's-
Is that what they were doing?
Oh, and then they were moving it down and parking in the, in the car wash on Redding Road in Evendale, so they were moving from one location in Evendale to another right along Redding Road.
Yeah, so I think we have to come up with some thoughts and ideas of what to do with them.
Food's good, I'm just-
Please?
The food is very good.
That's what I understand, and that's what other people are saying to us, they like them, so we're quite a conundrum in the situation. That's about what I have. Anybody else have anything? Okay, let's go. Oh, yes, the March meeting, you know, is not the first Tuesday, or the third, second Tuesday, it's the third Tuesday, somebody wants to take a vacation.
When might that be?
I don't know, somebody around here.
Committee is the second Tuesday.
Please?
Our committees are the second Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah. So, let's go to the ordinances, the first ordinance is ordinance twenty-two dash ninety-eight. Because we are not able to reveal who is the interested party for lot four, we would like to table that ordinance to another time. Now, I suspect that may require a special meeting, because we're undergunned to, it looks like, or they, from the company, to get this done by eighteen months, so we'll probably have to contact you on that. However, Mr. Elmer tells me that our electric aggregation company has supposedly found somebody, but we want to know who, what, when, where, and why before we pass an ordinance on it, and that would require a special ordinance also. And because I'm leaving town on the sixth of March, we'll just have to see, the vice mayor may have to have the special council meeting during that interim time. So, may I have a motion to, lay it on the table, I guess?
Suspended, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to ordinance twenty-three dash eleven, and I'd like a motion to read it by title only. So move.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
An ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the Gorman Heritage Farm funds and declaring it as an emergency. This is so we can accept funds from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, which have to come to the village and can't come directly to the Gorman Heritage Farm. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance? So move.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. So move.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance twenty-three dash eleven adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-three dash oh-six, and I'd like to read it by title only, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire Gabrielle Murray as a part-time childcare attendant for the Recreation Department and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. So move.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance twenty-three dash oh-six adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-three dash oh-seven, I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire Kayla Rogan as a part-time childcare attendant for the Recreation Department and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
And ordinance making appointments to various boards and commissions in, in Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
And ordinance making appointments to various boards and commissions in, in Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 23-08 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 23-09. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to ac- to acquire property along Interstate 75 and declaring it as an emergency. This is the former Cloverleaf over by Lincoln Heights that we're seeking to acquire. May I, may I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt, adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 23-09 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 23-10. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Uh, Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing mayor to in, enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for the pickleball courts improvements, improvement projects and declaring it as an emergency. Uh, may I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Council stands adjourned.